All right, we have a quorum here, so I'll call the meeting to order. And first matter is to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chair, there are two additions I would like to make.
I withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Six point three, consider policy forty-three fifty-three, long-term suspension.
Okay.
And six point four, classroom library update.
Okay, Ms. Burns has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chair, with the changes and additions.
Okay, Mr. Smith has seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, item three point one, renovation church facility use agreement. Mr. Taylor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I have five items that I would like to have placed on this month's Board of Education meeting agenda. The first item for information would be the renewal for the facility use of renovation church. According to board policy, fifty-thirty, section G, superintendents required to inform the board at the next regularly scheduled meeting when these six-month renewals are approved. Okay. The next item I would request to be placed on the action agenda as part of the design-build contract agreement with Pender County Government and Bordeaux. We submit to them a request for payment when appropriate, which would then go to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And this request for payment is five hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, which signifies a fifty percent completion for the design development process. Any questions on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, the next item I would request to be placed on the action agenda is the purchase of metal detectors that would be placed at our high schools for large athletic events and other large gatherings. We did submit and were approved for the up to two hundred thousand dollars for the state safety grant. In this plan, we did allocate or request forty-nine thousand for the purchase of nine metal detectors. After receiving final bids, this request for proposal is forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, which would be paid from the awarded state safety grant funds. Any questions? Okay.
I have one question with that.
Yes, sir.
What type of training is, would that be also offered? Because I know some of those, I guess they pick up different things, would that be part of the purchase? Would we also get some type of training with that?
Yes, sir, we do have training from the company, but our SROs will also be helping in facilitating the training at the site specifically after they're put into place.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. The next item I'd request to be placed on the action agenda is the Cape Fear Campus intercom upgrade. The system was installed in two thousand and one during the original construction of the facility. After multiple additions, one wing on each school, as well as the pre-K learning cottage out back, and now the Pila facility, we have basically overburdened an archaic system. It continues to fail, burning out individual cards and things of that nature. So we've been spending thousands of dollars trying to keep this system alive, but it continues to fail, and now the parts are completely obsolete. So after we conducted an RFP, we received bids from multiple vendors, and the original installer is actually NC Stown, but they have a new system called Nyquist, which is basically just a complete upgrade enhancement of the services that were provided before. So they'll rip out all the old stuff and put in the new stuff, and it's a hundred and four thousand, fifty-six dollars and seven cents, which would be paid from our capital fund balance. Any questions? Okay. And the last item to be placed on the action agenda upon your approval is the receipt of bid proposals from multiple vendors for providing lawn care for this coming growing season to begin April first through October thirty-first. After last year's request to increase the number of cuts during the high-growing season in particular, we've received the bids which are somewhat considerably higher than last year's and previous years, but our request is to, will be to separate the county and allow two vendors, one to take care of everything on this side of the river and the other to take care of everything on the other side of the river. And that request for funding would be two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-four cents, which would come from our local operational fund balance.
I have, I have one thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chair, I think we need to amend that contract. As previously stated, when another board member and I was in strategic planning, this has failed to be done. We're at a point where specifically stating my daughter went into a school last year and was not able to go to the playground because I hadn't been cut for the first time last year. The lawns at CF Pope specifically, I wouldn't allow it in my yard. I wouldn't, I don't see it necessary to allow it, the taxpayer's paying for it either. So I would just ask that the board consider revising the contract to back the months up for the lawn maintenance.
Could you remind us again what month it starts?
Historically, the contract has gone from April first to October first. October thirty.
Would it be any type of conflict if we were to do what Mr. Springer suggested? How difficult would that be to move it up a month?
Well, we're already into March.
Yes, sir.
We do allow these services to be continued by local providers until this contract is active in the event that it's needed. And yes, we did have a very warm February in particular, and we've sent our crews out to several other places to mow as well. I'm surprised that you're telling me that the CF Pope playground is unusable by students when I've not received any notification from any other staff member nor the principal of the school.
No, I didn't say.
But I'll be glad to speak with Ms. Moore to find out why the playground is unusable and why I've not been notified.
No, I didn't say, I said last year, when my daughter started school, the playground was unusable.
Okay.
The point now is the lawn needs to be cut, and I'm not saying specifically around the, around the playground area, but I got pictures, if you'd like to look at them about the lawn.
Starting till August, the contract would start in April, and we would begin weekly cutting in June.
So it was a failure on the contractor?
I'm sorry?
It was a failure on the contractor, is that what?
No, sir, the old contract was for bi-weekly cuts. Y'all asked for us to increase the services.
Yeah.
We have increased the services. June, July, August, and September, we receive weekly cuts instead of bi-weekly cuts.
Okay, so I would just ask again that we back the contract up to March.
Okay. This contract, we're already in March.
Yep.
So what would you like for me to do with a contract that hasn't been approved by the Board of Education to begin in April when we're already halfway through the month of March?
Uh, Mike, uh, Ms. Taylor.
That wasn't what was asked of me. What was asked of me was that we increase the services from bi-weekly to weekly during the high-growth months, which I did do.
Very good, but I think also it was additionally discussed by another board member and I to back the months up for, or to compensate for that early growth.
Would you like, can I interject?
Yeah.
Would you like us to start the
Middle of March.
Contract as soon as possible?
Yeah.
If that's what the board would like, we will work to try and do that.
I think that would be okay. I don't know how the rest of the board feels there.
It'd be suitable with me, I mean, I know we're already in March, but maybe even for the future contacts when we do the bids, maybe to add March to it. To think, in that area, because I think with some of the growth that does appear that way. So I know we can't backtrack, but if we can for future, I wouldn't have a problem with that if the rest of the board were okay.
I'm perfectly fine with moving next year's contract to March first if that's what's being asked.
I think that would be, yeah, because it's too late now, and I mean, you're doing a good job on, I mean, whatever we have, we got to deal with it, like you said. But maybe for the, the next time to get ahead of it, might be, might be the direction to go in, if that's okay with the rest of the board. Any of the rest of you have any concerns or comments?
I agree, I mean, we're right here now, I mean, this is March twelfth.
Right.
I think it might be a little unreasonable right now to ask you to go ahead and hurry up a contract, especially when we're halfway through the month.
Right.
I'm okay with staying with April for this year, but I kind of agree with Mr. Smith. I think maybe next year we can take a look at moving it up a month.
I'd be glad to do that, I'll put it on the long-range calendar.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you say right now, y'all, y'all mowed yourselves?
We are mowing some of the areas that, that we're seeing as high-growth areas because of the warmness of the February and March, yes.
Because we can't, we can't back it up until we actually vote on this at our next meet, I mean, it's, we have no time, okay.
And that'll be on the nineteenth.
But we've, we've allowed some of our historic contractors to do some of the work because it's not over ten thousand dollars when they go out and actually just touch up some spaces, which we will continue to do. But for next school year, or next year's budget, we will move it back for a March start instead of an April first start.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, section four, which I think is all of you, right, Ms. Allen?
Yes, sir. You will see the fuel and electric cost reports. Does anybody have any questions related to, to those reports?
I have one question. Has staff done any analysis for the, let's say, January, February period versus January, February of last year to understand if we're seeing increase in costs because we've terminated synergistics? I'm just curious to see if that
We have not.
Okay, would it be possible for staff to do that?
Sure.
Because I think, Dr. Breedlove, it would make sense for you to know, you know, how much we're saving if you're going to reallocate those funds. So I think an analysis of January of, you know, synergistics versus no synergistics would be useful information for your budgetary conversations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, attorney fees. Any questions in regard to attorney fees? The next item are budget amendments. So you see all of the state, we have state, local, federal, and special revenue and capital outlay. Any questions or concerns related to the budget amendments? I hear none. So financial summary report. So you will see a few notes on the financial summary report. There are some federal programs that look over expended beyond budget, but they're just waiting on actual budget amendments to come back from DPI. They've been submitted and they're just waiting on them. I do want to point out, however, you know, we've been having some discussions about EC and budgeting, and I want to, I want you to look at like fifty-two, with the XX in all budget areas. So like fifty-two hundred in, in state is seventy-eight percent expended this time of the year, which is a little alarming. Local, fifty-two hundred, sixty-six percent. Federal looks over expended, but I can tell you that it's going to be about eighty-five to ninety percent expended. And this is for EC services. And even in special revenue, it's highly expended. And that's an area where we get Medicaid funding in, we do Medicaid billing, we get revenue in that's covering cost. So I just want the board to be aware, we do have a plan for this, but EC will be over budget by the end of the year and historically has been over budget. So we have our plan, it's not, it's going to affect some of our state dollars, but it's dollars that we aren't able to use because we don't have enough teacher assistance. But they are dipping into their Medicaid funding revenue that comes in as kind of their safeguard, which they haven't done historically in the past, so I want to let you all know that that's, that is an item for concern. Any questions about any, any other financial report?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What seems to be driving the, the increased costs? Is it increased student population, increased service provider cost, or outside help that's being required to comply with IEPs? I mean, I'm throwing out some ideas.
It's the increase in students, but it's also increase in one-on-ones with students for teacher assistance, and we are funded, state-funded by thirteen percent. So anytime you're over that cap, you get no other state dollars, and we are over that cap. So it's not unusual for any district to have this struggle, they all do. They just manage it as best they can because, you know, one lawsuit can be a lot more than what we're going to ever be over. So we're required by law, but truthfully, the amount of services that we are seeing that are, we're having to provide for the high-needs students are, are more these, this year.
Are we seeing an increase in the number, or is it just the additional services?
Would you say it's, it's more of the additional services?
Recently, we've been seeing a huge increase in the number of students coming into the district with EC services and having to provide comparable services before they get evacuated in the state of North Carolina. And some of those comparable services are one-on-ones and, and, you know, things like that. So we're working through as, you know, required by law to do that.
So essentially, are you adding to live in somebody else's plan until you make your own?
Very much.
And that's all for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Section five.
I only have one item today. So we have the required Head Start reporting program for January. I wanted to let you guys know, make you aware, that we currently have two hundred and sixty students enrolled in our pre-K Head Start programming. We did start enrollment and start accepting applications for next year. We currently have three hundred and fifty applications for our Head Start pre-K programming, but we won't start accepting kids into the, the pre-K Head Start program till April first. So that will go on to consent agenda on the nineteenth. Okay? Dr. Breedlove has the next one.
All right, the next item is on here is the student school board mentorship. It's actually called a Pender County School Board of Education Student Internship Program, and I was asked by the board to create a proposal. And this is just a first draft of what this proposal would look like. As you can see here in your handout, this internship program would be open to high school juniors and seniors. This program, being accepted in this program would allow students to take part in Pender County school business sessions such as a board meeting, such as this committee of the whole, at least as just kind of witnesses of procedures and how, how things work, Robert, Robert's Rules of Order and that sort of thing. The purpose of the internship is to enhance educational experiences of the students, encouraging students to develop leadership skills by serving our community. Through firsthand rule, firsthand set of experiences, interns will learn how the Board of Education, Pender County School District administrators collaborate together to work in the benefit of our students, teachers, parents, staff, and with our local government for the success of our school system. Participants, as I said, juniors and seniors, Heidi Trask, Pender Early College, Pender High School, and Topsail High School, students would complete an application. The idea is sort of to keep this number as a manageable number of ten to twelve students per year, spread out over either first semester or second semester. When we get into the application, students would choose what semester works best for them depending on their schedule for the upcoming school year. Content of the program is really broken down by, first of all, I'll start off with a board liaison or liaisons to this group. This is really a Board of Education program supported by the district administration to the board. And with that, the, the idea would then be to have students participate in board meetings as far as, as being there witnessing, also committee of the whole, but then also one day a month spending it with the various groups at the district office about how the school system works and interactions there. So we have working with superintendent, assistant superintendent, human resources, chief finance officer, chief academic officer, and chief operations and chief communications office officer as well. If you turn to the second page here, you'll see the activities designed for this group of, of students. You know, when working with me on a particular day of the, the month, let's say that's in, in August, conducting research on educational policies, best practices of our school system, assisting and reviewing and prepping for upcoming board meetings. How does that process work from beginning to end? Attending meetings with us, they could attend a cabinet meeting as long as, you know, obviously, we cannot share personnel matters with them, but how does this, this process work? That, that would be one day that they would work with me and, and our team. Then it's broken down also by operations, as you can see here, doing things like assisting in facility management tasks, you know, such as maintenance scheduling and safety inspections, that sort of thing that we do as a school system. Finance, assisting, assisting in budget preparation and analysis, curriculum and instruction. If you look into, into that, collaborating with our curriculum specialists, looking at how we develop educational resources and materials for the district. What's the processes for that? Human resources, learning how we recruit, hire, and employee relations, employee relations processes, and then working with Mr. Frank Bonner, communications, assisting in drafting press releases, why all of these things have to work together to pull off a successful school system. And so really getting those behind-the-curtain experiences, working with leadership. This is really a civic internship about giving back to our community, understanding the processes at the, this local level that we can provide as a school system. The requirements for our students is the completion of the application. I, I do think that it would be wise for us to also add in a requirement. The student has to be in good standing with the, the school in which they are, they are coming from. But you can see the application there, we have to have a, the principal recommendation, as well as putting in here two teacher recommendations. Don't want to create a huge burden Don't want to create a huge burden on our teachers, but having two recommendations is, I think, a pretty standard thing for our students to, to get, as well as completing the application. And if you want to look at that application, you can see the questions that are asked there. There's a little bit of redundancy in the application, and that was purposeful. For example, just trying to help the students understand, like on, on page two of that application that says, "What is your primary reason for applying for the PCS Board of Education Student Leader Intern, Internship?" And I give them some checkboxes there to, to check on. This kind of puts them in the right frame of mind because if you look below that, I asked several open-ended questions about why they want to do this, where they can expand on that answer. So I'm just trying to lead them into kind of what we're looking for, but still allow them some flexibility on how they respond to those. And the idea is we would open this up in April, and it would close at the end of April, and it'd give us the month of May to go through the applications to look for those ten to twelve students from across the district that could have this great opportunity to work closely with the board, with our district office. And, and once again, civic opportunity program put, put on that does not currently exist that could exist to really help our students and community understand this, this process. And certainly, this is a draft. I'd be open to any recommendations from the, the board has if you want to take this and, and look at it. And certainly, I'll answer any questions that you have at this point.
Dr. Breelove, how, how sustainable do you see this program?
I don't see any reason why it would not be sustainable. I think a key element to this is it does require the Board of Education, you know, to really take a hold of this. That liaison or liaison personnel, I see that person or persons involved in every one of these, like the monthly sessions that we would have with our, our district office. You need that, that board person there because there's going to be questions that would come up, you know? How does the board now interact with our, our finance office? And, you know, when we make proposals and we do this, what, what's the board looking for? What kind of questions are, are you looking to have answered when we present our budget or the monthly finance report? That sort of thing. So I, I do see that as a great opportunity for our students to see both the board member there and our district personnel as we kind of travel through the semester. These are one semester internships as part of it. And, you know, I do also, I, I put in here as an opportunity as well, a service project that the student might be involved with. I think that would be a, a great thing. And also to have on their resume at the end of the program that they were selected as one of, let's say, twelve students from across the district, and they completed a, some sort of project at the end. I think that would be something that either the workforce, college, military would all look at. That sets the student apart from, from other students by having this opportunity. But I do think it would be sustainable. Yes, sir.
Okay. My next question is, is there a reason why we, we, we don't have Pila on there?
Once again, you know, we've, Pila has changed slightly. It used to hu, it used to host, you know, students that were online only. Now that's pushed back to the school. The STAR program is really set up as a temporary for students that need that level of support. I'm not saying that there couldn't be an opportunity there, but I put it as, as really this traditional program, STAR program for a lot of our students who are, that need, for a discipline reason, they end up at Pila. We also, you know, most of our, our students, you know, of course, that's Coastal Horizons is there, and then once again, that's a, that's a temporary placement. That's the idea behind Pila, but certainly, if the board would like me to put Pila on there, we can, we can do that. There's an application.
I just don't think we need to exclude them. We need to give everybody an opportunity to, you know, if they're, if, if the principal sees fit and, and write in a recommendation letter, I think it should be entertained.
Yes, sir. It's easy to add. Yes, sir.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Would there be any type of possibility of credits, being that this was similar to an elective, or would this just be more of a volunteer-type basis?
I think this is, would be something similar to, you know, they are already scheduled for there. I don't, I don't know if there would be a number of, the number of contact hours would equate to a credit, high school credit. Once again, this is more of a, a service project and a resume builder for students. We certainly wouldn't take credit away. Remember, they're going to be out of school about once a, a month for either partial day or however we end up working this out, and they'll still have to keep their full load of, of courses.
I think we need to proceed.
Once again, I'll hold off before we end up publishing this out, just looking for additional feedback and making some of the changes that were recommended today. Can do that. And then I would, once again, like to put, push this out in April for a end-of-April close on the application. And so we'll work with our communications office, work with our principals to get the information out to all of our students. Thank you very much for bringing this up and allowing us to have this opportunity for our district and our students. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. I hope you guys are doing well. I have three things that we would like to add to the agenda for next week. One is a second read policy. This one brings in to, into policy our current practice of the anonymous reporting system. Again, this will be second read. It'll be on action or consent, whichever one you guys choose to put it on. Consent would be easier since it's been read a couple of times. However, the next two are new, and these are strictly for consideration. They would be on first read for next, for next week, I guess. The first one is policy thirty-seven, thirty-four seventy dash forty-three oh five. It real, it deals with alternative learning programs, and it deals with the transfer of students to that program under section five. It would remove the parents' appeal to the superintendent, or excuse me, the super, the superintendent appeal process would be removed from that board policy. These students would be assigned to Pila as an alternative to suspension. And that's, I think that's where some of the confusion comes in with, with families. They don't see the disconnect there if it's a, if it's an alternative program. So removing that chance for an appeal, they're certainly still be able to appeal the long-term suspension, but if they're moved to an alternative setting, they're no longer suspended. And I think that helps to clean some of that up in the verbiage. Glad to answer any questions that you have about that. The changes, proposed changes are in red, and it just basically removes that provision out of that.
Mr. Taylor, without having the policy in front of me, what would that look like if Pila's full?
Pila is getting full.
So we had to, we had to think about, you know, more than ten minutes in front of us, right? So I know of a case, and I'm not going to elaborate right now, but if we get too many, then what, what are the alternates?
Yeah. Online is the primary alternate right now. I can answer that question a little bit better by reviewing the next policy on the list. So this is a long-term suspension policy, and although Dr. Breelove's office does have the ability to shorten a long-term suspension, this puts it into, into policy. So if an individual committed an offense in the first quarter of the semester, we would not have to extend that time through the whole school year. He would have the ability to just do one semester. He already has that ability to do that, but it would hopefully decrease some of the less egregious offenses at the time they're spending at Pila. So in other words, if a student made a mistake that still leads to a long-term suspension, and we place them at Pila in the first quarter of the first semester, then Dr. Breelove would have the autonomy to be able to say, "Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna be at Pila until December, and then you're going to come back to your traditional school in January." Doing that, you have some space. So that's going to help a little bit, but right now, the only alternative is to, is to basically put them online. I will say that Pila does a good job of rotating students so that everybody gets some in-person. I won't say everybody. Most everybody gets some in-person time. And they do a good job with trying to keep up with the students that are mostly virtual through Apex.
Do you feel like this is weakening the, the discipline process, or you think it's strengthening it?
I think it's strengthening that it gives, just like with every other discipline issue that comes up, there are mitigating factors that are involved, and being able to take those into account, I think, helps with that. That way, you're not making, making a decision that is just, you know, written in stone. You have a little bit of autonomy as a superintendent's office to be able to make those decisions. Our goal is not to kick kids out of school. Our goal is to help them become able to come back to school and follow the rules and get their education. So it's, I think you have to have the, the balance there. And there may be occasionally when a student commits an offense that is egregious enough that would require the student to stay there for a full year. Just give us a little bit more autonomy to, to make those decisions.
I also think it's important to note that it is rare, very rare, that we get the same student who has been recommended for long-term suspension over and over. Usually, it's a, it's a one, it's a one-time only. We don't get a repeaters on long-term suspensions here. Not saying that's never happened, but it's rare that we do.
And you also have to keep in mind that Pila is a, is a multifaceted facility and school. So when you have students that are, that need additional support from Coastal Horizons, for example, you know, not every student that's there has the same needs. And, yeah, we have to, have to treat them individually like we, like we, like we would for any other student, but with their level of support that's required, sometimes it becomes a little bit more individualized.
Is this, is this the policy where we need to discuss on the repeated offenders as far as long-term suspensions, and nothing's, nothing's working, nothing's happening? Dr. Breelove, you and I talked about this yesterday.
Yeah, I think that if we do get repeat offenders on long-term, are you just talking about in the, the regular school setting, just normal everyday offenses? Are you talking about long-term?
Yeah. It, it appears one of the principals is saying this student is on a consistent basis, right? So if we could take out some of the, some of the middle work, I would call it, to go ahead and try to get parents to do what they need to do or have to do, that, that's what I'm after.
I think I would answer that by saying that we are academic institutions.
Yep.
All right? And our students come to school knowing that they will be in a safe place, that they will be supported. But I also will say that we have rules and regulations that we, and, and policies that we have to abide by as well. In a, in such a, a situation, I, I do think the principal needs to lead that charge on what, doing what is best and right for the school and the student at the same time through our MTSS processes, through, you know, any type of discipline support mechanisms. You know, we, we have behavior plans that we put in place for certain students, and that has to be done first before we can jump into alternative placements and, and settings. But if that has been done, then we have to do our job as well. So I just need to follow up on that particular situation with that principal.
So what I would ask, Dr. Breelove, do you think this needs to be a policy revision as far as our discipline policy?
On, on a long-term process of a semester instead of a full year, I, I do, I do think that it will benefit our system. You know, if we did a forty-five-day period like many other districts do or something like that, I do think it would be worthy of us to take a look at. Yes, sir. And to see if this would be beneficial for everyone involved, including the student, the school system, and at least worthy of our discussion.
And so I, I just see it as, you know, being in the schools, I see it hard for a teacher to be effective when he's got little Jimmy or little Joanna over here acting like a clown, you know? So if we could put that, the, if we could put the discipline policies up for evaluation or revision would be ideal, in my opinion.
Certainly. We need discipline in our schools, and we need to have policies that, that support teaching and learning, certainly. But we also have, have to work within our, our rules, laws, and regulations as, as well when it, when it comes to dealing specifically with students over a long period of time.
Yeah. Thanks, sir.
Well, and I do have an opinion about this. When the idea of Pila was first brought to this board, one of my major concerns was that it was going to have a negative connotation as being the place where we send our disciplined-challenged students. But Pila is much more than that, and I hate the idea that the other students that are out there are getting the negative, you know, connotation of Pila put on them that they don't deserve. And that is why I would ask, is there any way that we, that Pender County Schools can look into some other alternative for long-term suspensions within the district?
Yes, ma'am, and we are working on that as well to find, to find some, some way to support students and give them second chances. But, you know, obviously, we talked about there are some offenses that would go beyond, you know, that level of, but for majority of our students, you know, can we come up with an alternative that would not jump right into a long-term suspension and give them an, an option to do something else?
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
I think it's important to realize, too, that you, as a, as an educational institution, you don't suspend bad behavior out of a child. That's, you can't do that.
Agreed.
You can certainly suspend the child, but you also have to have programs and processes in place to help them along the path when they come back. So I think that's where the crux of the alternative suspension program can really pay dividends for our district.
Well, and let me be the first to say, I also understand that, I know that there are a lot of supports at Pila, and that is why many of our long-term suspended students are going out there, and I understand that.
They do a phenomenal job out there working with students.
Oh, I'm proud of them. And I, but also, like I said, I would like, I would like Pila to have the reputation for those supports rather than being a punishment.
Yeah, I think, I think any one of our principals that they were standing here would talk about the great things that Pila does for our students and students that return to them. And then it also falls back onto the school, too, about, okay, we know the student has had some issues in the past. What are we doing to support that student when that student does return to traditional school? And the, that's, that's so vital for a student's success when they come back into the regular program.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I got one more question, Mr. Taylor, if I can, Mr. Chair. What, as far as long-term suspension, how, how does this affect their attendance? Does they, they, does their attendance get, is it stopped, or does it keep going, or what's it, what's it do? Is it hurting the, is it hurting the percentage of that school that they attended?
We try our very best to not exclude a child when they've done something that would necessarily mean long-term suspension. We try to offer them some level of education. We try to offer them some level of education. Now, their attendance gets a little bit tricky if they're online, right? Because they're not in a seat. But we do try to provide some level of education to that child, no matter what they have, what they have done. And for anybody, since I've been here, we have not expelled anyone without any sort of education opportunity since I've been in this district, and I think that's a good practice to follow personally. So the attendance, it's hit or miss. When you're online, doing an online program, your attendance is really checked by, or you logging in, doing the work. So the attendance is different. You're not, you may not be sitting in a chair in a school, brick-and-mortar school, but you're still receiving education.
But we still take attendance.
We still take attendance, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd also like for the attendance policy to be added to the next, next board meeting, too.
I don't have anything else, sir.
All right. Thank you.
So I just wanted to give you guys an update on classroom libraries, just to remind you that it will be on the agenda in the action section next week. We're on a tight timeline for ordering to ensure that we get the books in in time by the end of June. We do have parent meetings this week. The lists of books have been available to parents for the last two weeks online. We've been collecting any feedback to be able to identify out what we need to remove, where we need to go with those things. So we have been pretty diligent about making sure that we've been keeping with the timeline that we wanted to keep with, to make sure that we have the list ready for you. You guys will get copies of the final list of 30 titles per classroom by Friday afternoon, Friday evening, Friday evening, if not Saturday morning. But the board meeting is on the 19th, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of when you are going to get those. They are online. Our first meeting with parents is this evening at Topsail Anandale at 5:00, and then Surf City Middle on Thursday at 5:00. And I believe, Craig, how many responses have we gotten to this?
It's K through middle.
K through middle, sorry.
Right now, we haven't had any responses from parents.
We haven't had any responses from parents on the book list titles so far. We've had a couple emails, and we've been working through those emails, but other than that, it's been, it's been a pretty good project thus far. So I just wanted to update you guys on that.
I just wanted to clarify also that we went through and selected 90 titles, hoping to get 30, right? That everyone could, every grade level could agree on.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the purpose of casting a wider net to get to the smaller net of titles.
And we were very diligent on, I know Craig and his team worked with Destiny on curating a list of titles that were high-interest titles that would supplement our current curriculum, appropriate at each grade level, K to six. So we were very diligent on making sure that we did that. And then on the spreadsheet that we provided to parents, we also provided a little blurb about what the book is about, so they could also do some research on it that way as well.
So Dr. Sawyer, are these 30 titles going to go across the board? Sixth grade at Burgal Middle?
Every sixth-grade classroom.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's going to be a standard?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Every sixth-grade classroom will get the same 30 titles, and they'll get three to four of each title. That way, they can be used in the classroom for independent reading. They can be checked out, taken home, you know, those kind of things to really promote, you know, literacy.
And how were these 30 titles selected?
So.
Can you expand on that, how they were selected?
Yeah, so we worked with the company, the first place we started, they have a lot of media coordinators that work in-house with that company. So the first thing we started with is looking at the core curriculum that we have with Wisdom and seeing what topics are covered in that curriculum and trying to find some high-interest titles that cover those topics. So we started there, and again, focusing on some different grade levels. So they kind of built out those lists based on what's in their catalog. And another reason, to kind of speak to what Dr. Breelove was saying, is one of the reasons we also are going a bit wider, too, is that in case, because we're in such a tight timetable, if certain books aren't available from the publisher, right? We don't want to be in a situation where we're not getting our order in. So that's another reason to kind of do that, and also to give us kind of that freedom. They wanted to give us, hey, we think all of these titles will fit for what you need, but really, what is it that your community wants? The other thing that we've been doing the last couple of weeks is each individual school's IMTAC team has been given a grade level. So all of our, you know, in our elementary schools, so they've got a grade level of titles to work with, but they can also look at all the titles as well. So that IMTAC team is reviewing the titles for that grade level list, and they're providing us feedback as well. And all those IMTAC teams have parents on them as well, and a member of each grade level at the school level. So, you know, we're really trying to get as much feedback as we possibly can. We encourage parents to come out this afternoon, enjoy being able to talk to them, share where that information's at. Again, it's very readily accessible on our website. If they have any questions, they can obviously email any parents in the community, Dr. Sawyer or myself, we'd be happy to help answer those questions for parents.
So Mr. Lawson, outside these 30 titles, the teachers are not to deviate from these specific ones, is that?
Well, I mean, our current policy, 3200, does have the ability for parents, or, excuse me, for staff to bring in instructional material on their own. So obviously, you know, not just books, but articles, websites, you know, our staff creates lessons. A lot of times, they'll pull their own resources in. So our current policy allows them to do that and states in 3200 that the principal will create a plan to basically manage and review those materials that the teachers bring in on their own. So this would not eliminate the flexibility for our staff to pull in instructional resources they deem appropriate for their class, but it does really free up, again, we've had a lot of teachers that they spend their money to provide resources, and sometimes they might not necessarily know, you know, if you've got like a sixth-grade science teacher or something like that, maybe what are the best, you know, titles for improving reading? So this allows us to kind of help offset any of that personal cost for developing those classroom library sets and ensuring consistency in the best possible resources across our district. So instead of our teachers like going to like, where can I buy a bunch of books cheap, right? We're making sure they get really high-quality products that fit and match with our curriculum.
You may not know this, how long does it take the principal to review the stuff that the teacher brings to them, and how often does that happen?
I'm not sure, sir, exactly how that happens. Every principal in every school is a bit different. As far as, you know, again, I can only speak to maybe principals I've worked under in the past, as far as when I've turned my lesson plans in. Normally, that's a very normal process. Most principals have some kind of place for collecting lesson plans that their staff develops, and as part of that, you know, when you develop a lesson plan as a teacher, you're going to list all the materials, resources, you're using that lesson. So that's probably the most traditional way that they're seeing that, reviewing that. But again, policy doesn't stipulate exactly how that will occur or when that will occur.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Anything else?
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Unless anyone has anything else they'd like to discuss. Okay. Can I have a motion that we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
Second motion.
Mr. Smith, a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.